It is six o'clock on July 26th. I call this meeting of the Clear Creek Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that its notice has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. And we will head into closed session as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, concerning purposes permitted by the act including: 551.071, consultation with attorney; 551.072, deliberation regarding real property; 551.074, deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignments, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public employee, or to hear a complaint or charge against an employee. And our first item is to consider recommendation for Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction. And our second item is to consider level four parent-student grievance. We'll start with the level four parent-student grievance, and I call us into closed session at 6:02.
Mr. President, have we established a quorum?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We will go into our pledge allegiance.
Good evening, and thank you, everybody, for your patience. I'd like to introduce Victoria Nguyen, who's going to lead us in the pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the unity of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And if you don't mind, please join. And if you don't mind, please join me in a moment of silence as we recognize two friends of the district, longtime employee of the district of 47 years and consummate Clear Creek Wildcat, who manned the front desk and some will say helped the late Ralph Parr, then Gail Love, and finally Jamie the Juice Majewski, Paula Radishoni. And also, many of us will recognize that Paul McCarty has joined us tonight. Unfortunately, that means that he's back with us because he has lost his lovely bride of 41 years, Patty McCarty, consummate friend of the district and friend to many of us in this room. So please join me in a moment of silence as we recognize both of these individuals.
So as additional trustees come forward, again, I just want to thank folks for your patience this evening as the board was conducting earlier board business. We are thrilled to recognize several individual and organizational honorees this evening. And the last 16 months certainly conjure up a variety of emotions, some like fear and frustration, but other emotions such as hope and feelings of courage. And that's what we want to focus on this evening for our very special recognition. Because the courage and hope provided by our partnership with our honorees this evening has made all the difference to the world and us and Clear Creek ISD. And so we're pausing this evening to recognize distinguished members of the community who served on the front lines and shoulders-to-shoulder with us so that learning could continue to flourish in Clear Creek ISD during the pandemic. And so thank you and congratulations to CCISD's 2021 Community Partners of the Year, Memorial Hermann and UTMB. And if I can say just a few more, before asking you to come forward, if I can say just a few more words, really, these partnerships over the past year set a new gold standard for uniting in terms of a common mission, with that common mission being to safely reopen and operate CCISD. And for those of you who may not know, these two institutions generously gave of their time, considerable expertise and resources so that we could accomplish that critical mission of safely reopening and operating. And so from their active participation and leadership on the safely reopened CCISD committee and their close advisory role on an ongoing basis, to their early provision of the vaccine for CCISD nurses and then all staff, these actions had a great effect on our ability to anticipate and mitigate challenges to protect public health within our school community. And really, I cannot, it's hard to express with words, the gratitude that we feel, but we wanted to do that. And so it's really with great warm appreciation that we recognize you as Community Partners of the Year. And I would like to invite you all, if you'd like to make any remarks, it is our pleasure to have you here this evening.
My name's Kelly Ocho. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Memorial Hermann Southeast in Pearland. I just want to say it's our absolute privilege to partner with you all for the safety and protection of our students and the community. I'd like to just have Dr. Macaluso-Davidson say a few words because she's been instrumental in this relationship, and we're really blessed to have her at Memorial Hermann and appreciate very much all that she does to serve our community as well. So thank you for having us. Thank you for recognizing us, and thank you for allowing us to work with you for the good of the cause.
Thanks, Kelly. Thanks for having us as well. I think it's been really such an honor and a privilege to work with y'all. The work that you do is amazing in educating the next generation and truly admirable work. So really, just an honor to get, to partner with you this last year in getting kids back to school and learning. So thank you.
I'm Janak Patel, Director for Infection Control and Healthcare Epidemiology at UTMB. Want to thank again CCISD for recognizing our effort. It's been a really team effort. So on behalf of our colleagues at UTMB and our partners at the Galveston County Health District, Dr. Kaiser in particular, who actually had planned to come here but could not be here, yes, it has been a really important mission to work with you. I know this is about children, keeping them safe, but I also want to say, the battle is not over. The struggle continues. We must keep focus, and we are still there to help you. Just please call on us.
from high school, college, and, college or and/or career-ready. And so we have countless stories of students achieving their personal academic goals, but tonight, we have a particularly compelling story. And we are thrilled to recognize Victoria Nguyen, who's a senior at Clearbrook High School. She made a perfect, let me repeat, a perfect score on the ACT. Her score of 36 is significant and rare, since less than 1% of the 1.67 million students who take the test earn a perfect score. So wow. This clearly shows any college or university, plenty of evidence that she is ready to excel in any post-secondary opportunities. So congratulations to Victoria, her family, and all the wonderful teachers. And we appreciate Dr. Lopez, her principal, being here on behalf of all the wonderful educators that have supported her. And here is another truly significant accomplishment. So we also want to recognize Tatiana Vasilev from Clear Lake High School. She has been named a 2021 First Championship Dean's List winner. And FIRST, as you may know, means for inspiration and recognition of science and technology. And FIRST robotics teams worldwide select and nominate up to two high school students each year to be Dean's List semifinalists. But it's similar to the National Merit Scholarship Award, so those semifinalists then compete for two district or regional championship finalist awards, from which only 10 students worldwide are named Dean's List winners. And so the students who earn the FIRST Dean's List award status are truly fantastic examples of student leaders who've led their teams and communities to increase awareness for FIRST and its mission. And these students have also demonstrated personal technical expertise and accomplishment deserving of this global recognition. And she is the third CCISD student to win this highly prestigious award, and we salute her for this amazing accomplishment. Well done. Also, Mr. Drake is principal coming, as well as James Jobe, All Things Robotics, for coming to support the recognition this evening.
And it's always a good day when we get a chance to recognize our community partners and our students. Perfect score on the ACT, phenomenal. And next, we'll go into our community input. The purpose of community input is for the entire board to receive feedback from citizens. The board will hear the public comments but will not respond. Matters brought forth that require a response will be addressed by the superintendent as appropriate. All information received is subject to verification. Community input is scheduled for 30 minutes and has two forums. Those requesting to address the board in advance of the meeting are granted three minutes to address their topics, and those who sign up this evening prior to 6:30 are granted one minute. Public comments regarding items on the board agenda shall be heard prior to public comments regarding any topics not on the board agenda. Non-agenda items shall be heard on a first-come, first-served basis. A total of three speakers shall be allowed for each non-agenda item, topic. Public comments of non-agenda items extending beyond the 30-minute timeframe will be heard after all other business of the board is conducted. A staff member will monitor the time. The board has requested that no personal names, insults, abusive, or profane language be used. Failure to follow this request may cause the public comment to be terminated. And our first speaker is Mr. Eric Hoag. We will move to Ms. Kay Schroeder. Next, we will go with Ms. Mandy Ryder.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Ryder. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am here tonight to voice concerns that many parents are having as the school year is about to start while we are actively dealing with the pandemic. The governor has made mask mandates illegal. CCISD calls masks a personal choice. Now, COVID numbers are climbing, the Delta variant is out of control, and Galveston and Harris County threat levels went up last week. Vaccines are on the decline among those that are eligible, and no elementary school child can yet be vaccinated, and school starts in 21 days. I had two children attend CCISD schools. I seldom thought sending my children to school was dangerous. I mean, there are fire drills to teach them what to do in case of fire, active shooter drills to give them the skills in case of the unthinkable, and the district closes a school during bad weather. Schools must protect children, but now there is danger in the school, and we must find a way to actively keep them safe. We must decide what is best for our children's safety, and this is absolutely about safety. We have repeatedly heard that children will not be required to wear masks and that everyone should get vaccinated as soon as possible, but what about those that can't be vaccinated yet before school starts? There is no answer other than masks are a personal choice and to get vaccinated. The kids can't be vaccinated yet, so how is that a solution? The American Academy of Pediatrics and Dr. Philip Kaiser, the Galveston County Health Authority, recommend that masks be worn regardless of vaccination status. Instead of calling masks a personal choice, the district should rephrase it to masks are encouraged for all students, for the safety of all. Make it a safety campaign. Take care of your friends. No mask mandates, just a strong suggestion, especially in the elementary campuses. The littles are more likely to want to take care of their friends. The upper grades should be encouraged to be vaccinated, as the governor suggests. After more children are vaccinated, then we can start to put COVID behind us. But by opening in a way that more closely resembles pre-pandemic operations, we are ignoring the fact that COVID is not over. We are not post-pandemic, we are still in the thick of it, only now it's mostly unvaccinated that are contracting COVID. And CCISD will have 27 campuses full of unvaccinated children who have been told that masks are a personal choice instead of to keep them safe. I want kids in school. They need socialization as well as the education, and I call upon the board to advocate for these children. They must be kept safe. We must find a way to work together to keep every student safe.
And thank you, Mrs. Ryder. And next, Christine Perizzo.
This evening, I have two points to make regarding transparency, or the lack thereof, in Clear Creek ISD. First, it has been 67 days and 83 days, respectively, since I submitted two Texas Public Information Act requests regarding electronic data. I would like to remind this body that it is the board's responsibility to be informed about open records laws and ensure the district's employees are educated on the requirements of those laws. On both of those points, you are clearly falling short. I was going to help you by reading the open records laws to you, Sections 552.001A and 552.221A, but I know only the people at home are actually paying attention to what I'm saying. In short, these laws say the district doesn't get to decide what information is or is not released. The law does. In delegating authority to a government body, voters do not give public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. And requests must be answered promptly and completely. That means days, not weeks or months. We don't need a legal opinion to agree that over two months on one request and nearly three months on another is not promptly. Unless this district has something to hide, then I expect the superintendent, with the support of this board, to ensure I quickly receive responses to my requests. Second, this past Saturday, July 24th, this board received a summary of a so-called equity audit report. What is an equity audit report? Because this report was discussed at your team-building workshop, that means the district has an excuse to hide this report from the public. As everyone knows, equity isn't referring to stocks and bonds. It is a well-known buzzword for critical race theory, a divisive racial ideology that is becoming a cultural cancer across our nation. Supposedly, it was banned in CCISD, but policy is only as good as the body that enforces it. And behind closed doors, it seems the district can't wait to help our new Associate Superintendent of Curriculum implement equity programs and/or sneak CRT into our children's classrooms. Equity is not about equality of opportunity, but equality of outcome. We've already seen examples of equity in this district, such as removing the requirement for intermediate school students to pass science and social studies. But does that outcome of being promoted to the next level really help those students or just push them through as quickly as possible? And removing letter grades during the spring of 2020, punishing high achievers. Every student had the same outcome, but at what cost to their education, not to mention their mental health? So what's next? Removing advanced math courses before 11th grade? Getting rid of STEM magnets and GT and wave programs? Introducing bias reporting systems and penalizing teachers who criticize equity framework? Paying more money to more consultants to implement these bad ideas? I and many others would like to know what's in the report and why the district is trying to hide it. Going back to the Texas Public Information Act, I expect our requests to be fulfilled promptly, which means no more than 10 business days. The board is supposed to be guardians of public trust, and it's time you act like
Thank you for your comments. And next, Mr. Jonathan Lucas.
I'm going to actually sit down.
And Mr. Lucas, we have you for one minute.
Unfortunately, yes. I really wish it was a few extra moments. If you don't mind, ladies and gentlemen, I'll pull my notes up here real quick. This is, my name is Jonathan Lucas. I currently sit as president for our board of directors in Countryside South on the west end of League City, where we all know where Hall Elementary is getting a makeover. It's going to make our neighborhood even that more attractive, and, you know, we're an older neighborhood, we're built in '79, but the construction, it's killing us. I mean, I'm begging and pleading. There's a lot of unhappy homeowners. I mean, it's just, our streets are only 23 feet wide, and like, our neighbors, like Reseg Oaks and Westover Park, they're 32 feet. The contractor's name, McShan, I believe, is doing the work for Hall Elementary. I know I'm running out of time, I'll cut through this really quick. They're parking on both sides of the main artery of our neighborhood, which is Country Lane and Meadowside, which fronts Hall Elementary. There is heavy equipment going in and out. They're doing three-point turns on the homeowners' yards, knocking over mailboxes. You know, we can't, I know everybody wants to talk, but homeowners aren't even able to get their trash picked up on Country Lane and Meadowside. First responder access is greatly affected. Certain city ordinances are being broken as well. I mean, we all want progress, absolutely, but the way it's being going about, I know we can't please everybody, or don't we be happy? But we, I'm begging, pleading, please, there's got to be a solution. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lucas, I encourage you, I know you weren't able to get everything in.
Yes, sir.
Please email the board.
Absolutely.
You know, you can, you can find our email address online. Please email us those concerns, and so hopefully, we can have those followed up with.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And Dr. Williams, did you want to comment?
Yes. I want to thank all of our public speakers tonight for sharing your perspective. And I want to share that on Saturday, July 24th, this past Saturday, the school board held a governance retreat from 8:00 AM to approximately 3:15 PM. The agenda for this public meeting was posted on our district website and did not include any closed-session items. No actions were taken by the board at this meeting. And the time was mainly split between two topics, responsive strategic planning and team operating procedures. The responsive strategic planning agenda item included information regarding key focused areas for the coming school year, such as effective first-time instruction and health and safety. The board is tentatively scheduled to receive an update regarding this topic at the September workshop. The topic of the team operating procedures will return to the board as an action item as early as the regular August board meeting. The seven-hour and 45-minute meeting included approximately 10 minutes relating to a summary of an equity audit report, which was conducted by Curriculum Management Solutions and commissioned in December 2020 by my predecessor, Dr. Greg Smith, and was discussed at the livestreamed board meeting on December 7th, 2020. This past Saturday, July 26th, our Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction made brief remarks regarding the forthcoming report to the board, and as I mentioned, it was about 10 minutes or less. We've not yet received a final version of the report. We hope to receive the final version soon and tentatively plan to place this topic on the agenda for the board workshop or meeting in August. An overview of the findings and recommendations would be provided at that time, and the entire report would be shared publicly. No action is being taken at this time regarding any recommendations that may or will be forthcoming. Staff would communicate clearly and publicly before proceeding with acting on any of the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, for your comment. Next, we'll move on to action on closed-session items. Do I have a motion for Item A?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Bowen.
I move, I move that we accept Shannon Simons as Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Do I have a second?
I would like to second that.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. We have a second. Do we have any comment? Seeing no comment, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. And the motion carries unanimously. And do I have a motion for Item B?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Bowen.
I move that the Policy Committee examine a possible revision to the policy at its next scheduled meeting that would expand the exception in Board Policy FDD local for seniors to students who have completed, from seniors to students who have completed two years of high school within the district.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Thank you, Mr. Larson. And I will call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion carries unanimously. I will say, and I wanted to thank our audience for hanging in there, we had some deliberation, and it brought up some, some good discussion in regards to, you know, borders and, you know, I guess, like our, our students and how we're trying to recognize, you know, those students that are, that are close. They've invested in, you know, C C I S D, they've started their career in C C I S D, and trying to recognize that and see if there's some way that, you know, we can capture that. So wanted to thank everybody for their, you know, deliberations in closed session. And next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Does anybody want to poll any items?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Bowen.
I'd like to poll Items Number 12, which is the use of capital projects funds for facility-related projects, and Item 33, which is the approval of a word of contract 2022.602 Murals and Graphic Services. So 12 and 23 on the printed agenda.
12.
12 and 33.
Yes, on the printed agenda.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. President, I make a motion to poll Item Number 20.
And is there anybody else? If there, if there's nothing else, I'll, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented minus Items 12, 20, and 33.
Do I have a second? Mr. Sanchez, thank you for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no questions or discussion, I ask for a vote to accept the consent agenda minus Items 12, 20, and 33. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And motion carries. And Mr. Bowen, if you will start us off with Number 12.
Sure, and I, I think on this one, it's more of a comment than a question, because I feel that my question was pretty well answered in the, in the report, report that went out. I know this has been a controversial project, and I did actually originally vote against the allocation of the 3.2 million to the project for the parking lot, parent stacking lane, and detention pond, because it wasn't included in the original proposal. But is it accurate to say that those, those projects have already been substantially completed, and so this $300,000 would go toward the remaining project, which is the renovation of the, renovation of the school that was originally planned for?
That is correct. It wouldn't be defined as actual substantial completion, because there's some steps that need to happen, but the work is, is already completed. We just have a lot of punch lists and a lot of, a lot of work we still need to do for the, for the surface, but we would not identify any unproceedance in that work.
Okay, thank you.
And do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I will make the motion. Mr. President, I move that we, that we approve, or we accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the use of capital projects funds for facility-related projects in this instance.
And do I have a second to approve the superintendent's use of capital project funds in the amount of $300,000 for facility-related projects? Mr. Sanchez, thank you for the second. Any other discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And motion carries. And Ms. Davis, if you will present Motion 20?
Sure. Item Number 20, consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the sale of 4.20 acres of real property and conveyance of a related access easement to the city of League City. The only clarification I wanted to make is that the money received from this sale will be going, the $357,048.69 will be going to repay the 2013 bond. Do I have that correct?
It is, is going to be deposited into the 2013 bond program, and the board would choose what to do with any remaining balances at a future date.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Davis, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the superintendent to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale of 4.20 acres of real property and conveyance of a related access easement to the city of League City.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. And is there any other discussion? Any questions? Oh, I didn't know if that was, seeing, seeing no questions, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And the motion carries. And Mr. Bowen, Item 33, please.
Yes, so this is the item for Murals and Graphic Services. I, I know, and I guess to preface my questioning, I remember distinctly the last time this came up for the $200,000 contract for the past year, which was ultimately not executed mostly because of the challenges we had during COVID. This was a very controversial purchase item to begin with, and so I, I think, I, I think what I'm wondering most, and it's still not really clear to me, even from the information that was provided in the, in the responses, is how much of this contract is planned to be covered by PTAs and other volunteer organizations that are essentially using this as a vehicle to purchase murals for the schools versus how much of this is coming out of the school's general fund?
So the, the majority of those are raised through PTA funds, but I don't have as accurate of a picture of what the fundraising, fundraising is going to look like on the campuses going forward. So we're basing the estimate of contract value on past expenditures that we've used in this particular commodity or this field. So in a perfect world, I'd have more knowledge about what, what fundraising activities are going to occur and then be able to give you a more accurate answer, but we're basing this basically on historical expenditures.
So I, I guess, looking at this breakdown, we've got Leader and Me donations as $19,410, Leader and Me District funded as $27,192, $80,000 for Bonds 2017, which sounds more like an estimate than a quote that exists so far. And, and then other campus and department needs would be $273,398, and that includes the expended or expected PTA contributions. So what portion of that last category is going to come out of general funds?
Well, there's, there's, there's some that come through our library services department, and, but it's, it's generally, it's a small percentage. I would, I would estimate less than 10% would be general funds, and the rest of it would be fundraising.
Okay, so, so I guess kind of adding to, adding together the Leader and Me District funded and that category that isn't attached to a bond would be about $50,000 on murals?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay. And is that budgeted for as well?
So it's, it's over the course of two years that we would have that contract available, and it would only be spent if they had the budget available for it. So if they don't have the budget available, they, they wouldn't be able to tap into that contract.
Okay, thanks.
And would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I guess. So I'll, I'll make the motion. I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the award of contract 2022.602 Murals and Graphic Services, and I don't have the agenda sheet in front of me. The estimated contract value for the two-year term is $400,000.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Do I have a second? Mr. Sanchez? And I, I will say, and I know this is a kind of, I don't want to say pet peeve, but I know that Mr. Bowen, you know, wants to, wants to keep up with the, the budget and the spending in terms of the murals. If we could get an update, maybe through the course of the year, on what that breakdown might look like, maybe by school in regards to the murals, I think, I think that would probably satisfy the board, so. With that being said, any other discussion?
I'll, I'll say something kind of quickly. I, I think this is one of, this is one of those instances where throwing a lot of different funding sources into one contract, while it may be easier from a purchasing perspective, from a clarity of what is actually happening perspective and, and where this money is coming from, it, it, the, the agenda item as it's written makes it look like we're spending $400,000 of taxpayer money on murals, which would be out of control, I think, over two years. Now, once we have this explanation that PTAs are contributing a large amount of that, Leader and Me external funding is contributing a large amount of that, and that what's remaining, I presume, is not murals in the sense that you would think of them like as artwork painted on the side of the building, but just wall drawings and specialty painting that kind of goes like on the sides of gyms and things like that that we plan for and we want to have in our schools. And, and it's a much, much smaller amount. So I, I'm okay with it on those grounds, but I, I wish there were a more clear way we could communicate that through these agenda items. So it's something I, I think I run into personally a lot, but I don't know if there's a better way to do that in the future, because when, when you look at this, we see four different funding sources listed in one item, and they mean very different things, so.
Dr. Dupont?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that I think that, again, this is not the actual spending of the money, it's putting the contracts in place. And having been on the PTA and the Booster Club side of it, what actually happens is that, especially for large purchases, that money is collected over a period of time, then donated to the district, and then it goes into the district, usually like the principal fund within a school, to be able to spend the money on a particular item that's done. So it, it is hard to estimate what's going to happen, because it's dependent on the fundraising that's done within a school and what actually happens. So I think, I, I just want to note that that does make it really hard to figure out what actually is going to be spent from the district's perspective, because they don't know what's going to be deposited in those accounts, and that's also why you're seeing money coming from different accounts. In the end, there can be, as it's done throughout a year or two years, there can be a delineation of where money's actually coming from and what, where it's being spent and what it's being spent on. But upfront, it's hard to actually estimate all of those things.
Right, so, so maybe I guess to that end, like, like the president said, when, when we do get to the end of the year after the first year of this, I would like, I guess, a, a summary of any murals and wall art through this contract that we're using general funds to be covered. So I mean, obviously, PTAs will contribute to their individual schools, but anything that's coming out of the maintenance and operations funds, I think I'd like to know about on this.
Sure, we'd be glad to break it down for you with all the different funding sources once we have that clarity.
Thanks.
And thank you for the discussion. So we have a motion by Mr. Bowen, a second by Mr. Sanchez, to approve the superintendent's recommendation to award the contract 2022.602 Murals and Graphic Services to the qualified vendors on the attached list for the period of September 2021, September 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2023. The estimated contract value for the two-year term is $400,000. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And vote passes. Next, we will move into the approval of the design development for Whitcomb Elementary School Project.
We are excited to finally present the design development package for the Whitcomb Elementary major project that was part of the 2017 bond program. We've worked for months with Holly Hughes and her team, as well as Betsy Horner and her team. Lisa Lake has spent a great deal of time really working through the details, taking into account a lot of the experiences we've been experiencing over the last three months and the last year with these major renovations to really nail down some of the phasing as best we can, really making sure that we're going to end, end the project, giving this, this campus and those students what they really, really deserve based on what the, the voters approved in the bond referendum. So Joby is here with Joiner Architects. They've, they've been working with us really, really hard to get this package developed, and we'll let him go through the, through the, the presentation, and then we'll have question and answers at the end.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Appreciate that. And thank you all for letting us be part of this project. We really appreciate it. So we'll take you through kind of where we are with design development on Whitcomb Elementary School. This is a, a school that was built in 1967, so it's, it's.
Can I interrupt and ask a question? We don't actually have the video feed coming up on our screens, as it's supposed to be.
Well, that's no fun.
We have screen, oh, we have screen.
I was going to say, press the power button, but there's, so.
Yeah, that's, that's so cool. I mean, we're having on our little screens.
I've got a few, I've got about four of these printed versions that we'll, we'll give them a minute here.
You're going to wing it?
Yeah, we'll give them a minute.
Oh, okay, well, all right.
Oh, we can do, we can share those.
Oh, I like big pictures.
I promise the project's going to go smoother.
Sure.
Let's forget. Thank you. It's 1967.
It's not the actual book, but it should follow along one page at a time.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So again, Whitcomb was originally built in 1967. It's been added on several times over the years and renovated, but it's, it really needs some, some upgrades. So what we're going to do is we're going to do various renovations additions throughout the campus inside and out to bring it up to code and current district standards. That's our kind of goal. So we'll take you through kind of some of those, those things we're going to do. Again, you all probably know where this school is. It's located east of I-45, just south of Eldorado, on Receded Drive. The 2017 bond referendum called for a new auto stacking lane, which is shown as Item Number Six, a new walking track, Item Number Five, and renovations additions to the campus, including educational classroom wings, renovations to the administrative area, cafeteria, and Existing site plan, Whitcomb in the middle. All the parking and parent drop-off is on the north side of the site. West side of the site, you'll see the walking track and playfields. South side, we have some playground areas. To the east, we have the current bus and pre-K drop-off. We also have a satellite administrative building to the west, which is a concrete tilt-wall building we'll be incorporating into the new design, and two T buildings, two temporary buildings that are on-site that we're going to get rid of as part of the renovation addition. So this is our proposed site plan. To the north, you'll see our new vehicular stacking auto drop-off, new face for the building. We're going to have additions on the north side to enlarge increased area in the administrative wing. We're going to have two open-air atriums that we're going to fill in to create more educational space inside the building. And we also have a major addition to the west, where we're going to provide a new cafeteria, kitchen, a couple, some classrooms for pre-K, and an outdoor learning area. To the west, you'll see we have a new faculty parking lot. To the south, we have a new detention pond, which unfortunately, we're going to have to have. We'll fence that off so kids don't get in there, and we'll have a new walking track and playground equipment to the south, as well as to the north for pre-K. So again, the existing floor plan, to the north side, we have the administrative area, which we're going to enlarge, AA classrooms to the right, to the east on plan. Cafeteria is directly below the administrative. And the satellite building, we talked about a little bit there, that is going to be completely renovated, inside and out, to bring it up to standard. So, composite floor plan, you can see we're going to have a new face on the north side of the plan north. We'll have a new auto drop-off, a new administration wing, new enlarged entry, security vestibule, which the facility's lacking right now. You can just walk right into the building, which is not good. New cafeteria to the left, left side of the building, we'll have our new wing that kind of pulls everything together, pulls that satellite building and connects everything. Gym, again, is the same. New cafeteria, new kitchen, new pre-K classrooms up top. We have several collaborative areas. We have three new collaborative spaces that are in various spots in the building, so kids can kind of get together and do some outside of classroom learning. And we've also got three new flex classrooms. Enlarged areas, you can kind of see in blue, let's see if I can see, so kindergarten, does this work? Let's do it this way. So, kindergarten, pre-K. The satellite building, we're going to repurpose for music, art, and science. The new stage in the addition, cafeteria, kitchen, outdoor learning area and dining. Grade levels, first, second. And the red shaded areas are the flex classrooms, and a collaborative classroom on the corner Moving kind of south on the site, we have third and fourth grade classrooms, flex classroom, and a collaboration space. And the existing art and science labs at the bottom of the page, we're going to repurpose those into staff development rooms with a fully partition, so you can open up into one large space or keep it separate. The eastern portion of the building, again, enlarged admin, new secured entry, secured vestibule, enlarged commons, new library, Kiva, maker space, ancillary spaces. Fifth grade wing is down in this corner, with their own collaboration space, AA classrooms, and backup educational spaces. So, phasing is going to be tricky. We're going to have three phases. We're going to have summer one in 2012. We're going to have the school year 22, 23 as phase two, and then the third phase will be summer of '23. So, the goal here is to kind of get all of the site elements done in the first summer, so that when kids come back, they're going to have a place to play, they'll have playgrounds, they'll have their walking track ready for them. And then the contractor will also start building his faculty parking lot and concrete area for staging, and we'll put the stormwater detention pond in at that same time. With respect to the floor plan, the first phase, not much is going to change on the west side. We are going to do a little bit of demolition to create an exit corridor to keep the kids safe during, throughout construction, make sure that stays, that's maintained throughout the process. They'll do a little bit of work inside the satellite building, they can start doing some demo in there in case they need some areas for, for storage, but not much is going to happen inside the building in the first phase. Phase two, when the kids come back, the contractor will cordon off the western portion of the site, they'll begin the major addition at that time, they'll finish the faculty parking lot, and again, at that same time, they'll turn over the south areas to the kids, the playfields, playground equipment and such. Floor plan phase two, again, nothing's going to really take place in the building yet, not till kids are out of there for the second summer. We'll maintain that exit corridor, but the contractor's going to focus on that western addition to get all that in. Final phase, phase three, this is where it gets intense. We're going to renovate the entire interior of the building. We're going to finish up the addition to the west. We're going to create an addition to the north when we expand the administrative wing, and fill in the two open-air atriums, as well as expand the parking to the east at the bus drop-off, and put in the new auto loop at the north side. And phase three floor plan, that's when all of the interior work happens for the existing plans. So, we'll get new fire alarm, new fire sprinkler, all new lighting throughout, all new finishes. It'll look like a brand-new school once we're done after the summers are over. So, the good stuff. So, this is our new face. Betsy, I hope you like it. This is our new face of the school, so we'll have a new auto drop-off and a new presence. I mean, right now, when you go up to the school, you can't tell really where to go in the building. This is going to fix that problem. So, we'll have our new secure vestibule lobby behind that, administration wing to the left, so it'll be a secure entry point. This is a view from the east, or excuse me, from the west-looking east at the outdoor learning area and cafeteria addition. So, you can see there's some outdoor dining, some, some play activities for the kids. So, we're, we're looking forward to this, and this is a nice addition to the campus. Interior lobby, after you pass through the secure vestibule, this is going to be your vantage, looking down the corridor. At the end of that hall, you'll see the, the library to the left, that is the reception. Cafeteria, kitchen, and stage. And new library. The next couple of pages are just some 2D views of the exterior elevations. You know, on the north elevation, that's the new entry. We have a secondary entry further down that's for the pre-K and K. And on the west elevation, you'll see this is the cafeteria and kitchen, looking into that outdoor learning area. South elevation and east elevation, these are side views of the cafeteria addition and side views of the administrative addition. The next two pages are just programs, spatial sizes, quantities of all the classrooms and ancillary spaces. So, schedule. If all goes well tonight, we move into construction documents this week, get facilities, they're set for their final review at the latter part of November. We're looking to issue for bids March of next year, get a number at the end of March, and come back to the board in April of next year for award. Notice to proceed in May of next year, and substantial completion August 7th of '23. So, the total bond allocation is currently $28,298,565, of which $24,569,872 is allocated for construction. And in our internal reviews of the budget, we feel it's, it's appropriate. We've had, we've had some spikes recently with materials and material shortages, but we hope in eight months, we're past that. Questions?
So, we're, we're open for questions, or?
And thank you, thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions? I'll, I'll, I'll just make a comment, and I picked up my, my granddaughter there. It's, do they currently have two lines for the pickup? I can't remember. I thought it was just one line, if I remember correctly, so that'll be a, that'll be a huge relief.
It's, it's also very tight at the front with the number of parking spots they try to cram into that front lot.
Right.
So, this plan solves those issues by moving that, that staff lot to the back, where that would not be interfering with parents.
And I, and I saw that after the revision, we're, we're looking for 90 spaces. What is it currently? You know?
It's about that now.
Okay.
And they currently stack all the way down to shell drive.
Right.
They go all the way down on the thoroughfare receipt, and then they come around and stack.
Right. And I guess it'll.
This is intended to put it all, majority of it, on our site, which is a huge request.
Gotcha. I can remember being parked around the corner, waiting, waiting my turn, so.
And we're, we're double stacking to do that, because of the constrained area we have to work with. So, it's, it's oftentimes a little bit of a challenge, but our principals are really good at managing that and getting that done safely. So, that's, that's the way this has really been driven, is based on existing constraints.
Dr. Dupont?
I have just a couple of questions. What, there, there's currently an atrium in there, right? Is, is that staying, or what?
There's two of them. We're filling them in.
Okay.
Those will be the last two in the district that.
Okay, I was wondering about that. All right.
We're eliminating, this will be, completely eliminating those flood risks that we've had.
I was going to say.
And, and it also provides us an opportunity to provide some volume in the space that, that you'll see once we finish hauling and landal, and the, the way that we fill those atriums in, we, we've just starting to finish those up and get those. It really, it really looks nice when you have that higher volume with the windows and third stories bringing in natural light. So, we'll do that same treatment here as we're working through that. And it's right adjacent to the library, so it really creates a good, good feeling inside the school. The other one is in special ed, so that needs to go away, so we can have a direct connection between those two classrooms.
Okay. And I think all the collaborative spaces are wonderful, and I think this is great. It's going to be a neat, this is another situation where I think the, the kids and the staff are really going to be looking forward to getting into their new school, and it'll be a while, but it'll happen, so that's a good thing.
And we've worked, worked really hard with Betsy and her team about establishing grade levels together, close together, as opposed to kind of how it is now, trying to, trying to get those things pieced together. This, this design really helps us do that and provides that collaborative space spread out through the building, so more than one grade level can use them. It, it, I think it's going to work well.
And then my last question is, I had asked one about the playgrounds, and thank you for all the response on that. So, my remaining question about that is, what is the main exit to get to the playgrounds, like that students will use on a daily basis?
There's actually going to be a couple coming down the backside of the stage now. There's a corridor that exits the back of the school there, that's actually going to be fenced in with this new plan. We'll put a, a fire lane gate, so the fire department can get in, but it'll be secure. And then, right at the back of the current kitchen, that will be the back of the library now, there's a double door exit there that the kids will get out to the, to the playgrounds, and then, of course, over by the gym. So, there'll be multiple points of, of access that Betsy will work out on how she wants to get different grade levels over there.
Yeah, that, I was just kind of looking at that and seeing, and the gym makes sense, because that catches some of the classrooms and pods on that side of the building.
And those, those locations that you see there for playgrounds are schematic.
Okay.
We'll, we'll continue to, to tweak that as we get closer and work, work further with, with Betsy and her team on which one she wants where. We do like to have them close to the track, closer to the building, because that allows us for ADA access to and from the playgrounds through, using the track.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowen?
And maybe this is a better question for Holly, honestly, but, I mean, we've been, we've been including these collaboration spaces in elementary schools especially for the last several projects. Are, are we seeing those get pretty good use? I mean, at, at least during COVID, obviously, they couldn't, but maybe before that?
This space, we will use it, yes. This year certainly has been ideal for phasing and for our equipment and pasture. But in general, for tutoring, for Smolga Project, and for initial work, I still look at those, they've been well used. It's been, I don't know how we would do it here without, you know, for all the very complexities of learning that we have inside of us, so very thankful. It really opens up the space and the quality and the learning environment. They're used, and they are, they're very separate, they're, they're natural.
Thanks.
They do add a, a level of update to the building as you walk through, because it, it gives staff and students kind of a marker on where the different areas of the school are, and in addition to those collaboration areas. From what I understand, they have been pretty successful.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Larson?
Yeah, um, the overall budget of 28.3, how does that compare with the 2017 estimate? Uh, uh, you can adjust for inflation.
That is the 2017 estimate. So, what we do is, in these, because we're so far out from actually bidding the work, we're just confirming that our current estimates are within that allocation. If they're not, then we, we need to go ahead and ask for additional funding to cover that now, or we're at risk of spending all the time on the drawings and still not have the funding. But at this point, our, based on our current estimates, we are within the original allocation.
Excellent.
With the caveat that I've got on there that fluctuations are happening, and we are pretty, pretty, pretty hopeful that we're going to see that spike go down when we bid the jobs. We have this one and Ross that, that we're monitoring. So, right now, I think we're okay, but things could, could change depending on market conditions.
Okay. And, and I have one minor nit for the architect. The floor, floor space allocations, I think, are off. I'm pretty sure we have more than 1,600 square feet for second-grade classrooms. You might want to just take a look at that page.
1,600 square feet for a second-grade classroom?
Yeah, that's what's in our pack. I, I think there's just a little math error there that you can fix.
Oh, the total for all second grade is 1,676.
1,676.
There's only three classrooms.
1,676, yeah. It's, it's the total.
I, I, I think there's, there's a four.
Yeah, you're correct. Yeah, I'm sorry. There's a, yeah, there's, yeah, times four. I'm sorry about that.
Yep.
We'll get that corrected.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll be fired tomorrow.
Mr. Sanchez?
Just a, just a quick question. The detention pond that's shown there, do you know, is that a pretty steep sloping detention pond, or would it lend itself?
It's five feet average, right?
It's four feet deep.
Four feet deep, and it's a four-to-one slope, so we can mow it. That's our typical standard, so.
I didn't know if there had been any thought or discussion, or if it's where you wouldn't take elementary kids to do any kind of science projects, outdoor exploration, if that would lend itself. It may be more of a mess, so I'm just simply asking the question. I didn't know if it would lend itself to that or not.
Maybe science and mosquitoes.
Maybe.
So, the fences we put up have a lock gate, so if, if, if the teachers or the, or the principal wanted to create something like that, they could by opening the lock and letting them in, but they would always be supervised down in that area and secure it immediately after.
And I'm thinking with the, with the higher ceilings, we'll need to get a taller giraffe mask. I, I, I look forward to visiting. I think the kids deserve it, the community really deserves it, and I think this will bring us up to the standard that we have across the district.
A removable, sure.
A removable giraffe, sure.
Thank you.
And you're volunteering to wear that costume, right?
Well, I might. I might.
Good deal. Any, any further questions? Seeing no further questions, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Bowen?
I move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation of the design development for the Whitcomb Elementary School project.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Larson? And seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to consider scheduling a public hearing to discuss the 2021-22 budget and proposed tax rate. And before we get into that, I just wanted to recognize our two guests, Jeff and Alice Binzai and Jeff Kohlenberg. I wanted to really recognize the job that Alice has performed over the past couple of months, filling in for Mr. McClarty. Many of you who have met Alice may think she's soft-spoken, but don't be mistaken. She has a quiet intensity and tenacity that belies, belies her outside demeanor. Alice's ability to know all facets of the job of the Deputy Superintendent of Business and Support Services was invaluable. In case our audience does not know, the Deputy Superintendent of Business and Support Services coordinates amongst many departments, including but not limited to purchasing, facilities and maintenance, child nutrition, transportation, bond construction, athletics, and the list goes on. This office also oversees our investment in financial reporting and budget preparation, which we'll talk about in a minute. It is a testament that a good leader trains and cross-trains their people, and if Alice is any indication of this, it is comforting to know that we have folks ready to step up and assume those leadership positions in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Ready?
All right. So, one of our annual board action items that we bring forward each year is to ask the board to schedule a public hearing on the annual budget and to prove it, to approve a proposed tax rate that will be published on that, in, on the notice for that public meeting. So, the action that you will, we're asking you to approve tonight is one of the steps in our compliance with the property tax code and the education code. We're recommending that the public hearing for the budget be held on August 23rd, and we are also, the proposed tax rates. So one of our annual board action items that we bring forward each year is to ask the board to schedule a public hearing on the annual budget and to prove it, to approve a proposed tax rate that will be published on that, on the notice for that public meeting. So the action that you will, we're asking you to approve tonight is one of the steps in our compliance with the Property Tax Code and the Education Code. We're recommending that the public hearing for the budget be held on August 23rd, and we are also, the proposed tax rates we're recommending that should be published is 92 cents per $100 of value on the maintenance and operations side, and 31 cents per $100 of value on the interest and sinking side. So that, I, I did want to emphasize that you're not approving the tax rate tonight. You are actually just approving the tax rate, you'll, you'll approve that tax rate at the board meeting in September. What you're approving is a rate that will publish on the notice that will, for the public hearing in August. So we actually can set a rate in September below these rates that will be on the public notice, but we can't adopt a tax rate that's higher than the rates that will publish. So in the workshop in July, we discussed the possibility of reducing that interest and sinking rate by two cents. We also discussed decreasing the M&amp;O rate by two cents. We're still running our numbers. We're going to get our certified values from the Harris and Gaveston Counties this week. So we'll have a better idea soon of where we'll land with our tax rate, but we know that they, the tax rates will be at or below the rates that will be on this published notice. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
And I'll just remind the board of our, in our packet, that, that schedules on page 333.
I have but one simple comment, and that it's always a joy to see taxes coming down.
Are there any other questions, comments? Seeing no further questions or comments, I will call for a motion to consider scheduling a public hearing to discuss the 2021-2022 budget and proposed tax rate. Mr. Sanchez?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Trustees schedule a public hearing to be held August 23rd, 2021, at 6:00 PM. The proposed tax rate to be published is, make sure I'm looking at this correctly, I apologize. Oh, I just lost my page. 92 cents per $100. I touched the screen and it moved my page.
For maintenance.
For maintenance and operations.
And 31 for INS.
And 31 per hundred for interest and sinking.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Do I have a second?
I would like to second that.
Mr. Larson? And any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand, and the motion carries. And next, we will move on to item D, consider, consider approval of the 2021-2022 CCISD Health Insurance Premium Contributions.
Okay, so tonight, we will be asking you to approve a recommendation for our health insurance premium contributions for the 21-22 school year. As a reminder, one of the budget priorities that the board set this year was to administer competitive salaries, stipends, and benefits for all employees. And tonight, the proposal that we're presenting to you, we believe will allow us to accomplish providing a competitive compensation package for our employees.
Ms. Binzai, if I can interrupt for a moment, I just want to share with trustees that you've been emailed the slide deck that's being presented this evening, since the monitors are not available for, for your viewing, if you'd like to reference. Thank you.
Okay, so TRS Active Care, which is our health insurance plan, came out with some rate increases this year. The reasoning behind those rate increases were COVID-19 claims costs came in relatively high. They also had concerns that they would be losing membership to, to competing insurance plans that school districts were starting to offer around the state. So the state did set legislation to prevent that, the competing plans, but they still had set those rates based on the possibility of losing membership and losing, losing districts from the plan. So the good news is that there were very minimal planned changes on the health insurance plans this year. There were some changes on Active Care HD, which is a high deductible plan, and that probably the main change there was that that, the co-insurance, which is normally 80%, was dropped to 70%. So overall, the district spends about $12.7 million on health insurance premiums for our employees each year, and with these rate increases that TRS came out with, that resulted in an additional $1.7 million in premium increases. So that would, if we were to make no change to our contribution to employee premiums, that the employees would be picking up that full, full cost. So we did look at several options on how to share this increase between employees and the district. And what I've shown here is, what we're looking at is increasing that contribution by $14 a month on the district's share. And I wanted to give, just give an example through these, this spreadsheet to show what most of our employees in the district that are covered, there's about almost 1,200 employees that are covered, with employee-only coverage on Active Care 1HD, they will see, even with this increase in our contribution, they will still see an $18 a month premium increase, which is about $216 a year in health insurance contributions. The second, another large area are our employees that are carrying their children on their coverage. And on this slide, you'll see on Active Care 1HD, employee and children, the annual increase that they would see would be $516, even with that increased contribution from CCISD. And finally, another big area where employees will have chosen to be, chosen the plan is Active Care Primary Employee-Only Coverage. That was a new plan last year. We have about 650 employees on that plan, and those employees will see a $204 increase per year in their premiums. I always showed TRS Active Care 2. You'll see we have about 113 employees left on it. That, that plan does not allow any additional employees to get on it. Those employees are just grandfathered. It's very high premiums, and, and most of those employees are moving off of that plan and on to other plans. So our benefit recommendation for you tonight is to increase the district's health insurance premium contributions to TRS Active Care by $14 a month, to $324 per month for employee-only coverage, $384 for employee and spouse coverage, $359 a month for employee and children coverage, and $409 a month for family coverage. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have about health insurance contributions.
There any questions?
I don't, I don't know that I have any questions, because you did a good job of presenting this at the workshop too, and I know we went through all of this at the workshop too, but I just want to make the point that I also made at the workshop, and I know we haven't discussed the, the salary increase yet, but I think it's important, when any of this is discussed at any level, that all of it be taken into consideration, because this is a huge impact. And if there were no increase in salary, you're obviously losing money, because essentially the, the TRS, the health insurance is going up. So I just want to stress the importance for everybody that it all needs to be looked at whenever we talk about increases in salaries for teachers.
Any other comment?
And Mr. President, I'm happy to make the motion.
Right, Dr. Dupont?
I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation to increase the district's health insurance premium contributions to TRS Active Care by $14 per month, to $324 per month for employee-only, only coverage, $384 per month for employee and spouse coverage, $359 per month for employee and children coverage, and $409 per month for family coverage.
All right. Thank you for that motion. Do I have a second? And Mr. Cottrell, thank you for that second. I apologize, I missed you last time. Without any further comment?
I'm sorry. I'll say one more comment, I guess, along with my other one, and just appreciation to the district for always looking at the possibilities for what to do and be able to look at. I mean, you guys do an incredible job of the spreadsheets and changing all the numbers and what happens, and, and I appreciate getting the information about the actual impact to the different employee groups and dollar impact. And so I appreciate that that is always done, and the district always looks at how to, to make that, the impact of those increases a little bit easier for employees to.
Thank you. And with a motion and a second, I'll call for a vote. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand, and the motion carries unanimously. And the last item agenda is to consider approval of the 2021-2022 District Compensation Plan.
Okay, so tonight, we are looking and, at our recommendation for the compensa, district compensation plan. The, the first thing I wanted to go over was our teacher salaries. This is something that many of you are used to seeing. Over the past several years, we have captured the salaries of 17 of our area Houston, Houston area districts that we use to set our, make our decisions on salaries. We like, have always made it a goal. We look at the median and the starting salary, five, 10, 15, and 20-year salaries. We have never aimed to be the highest paying salary, or, and we of course don't want to be the lowest paying, but we want to hang on to that median and stay right, right at that median, and that served us very well with our recruiting in the past. So this is what we ended up with last year for our salaries. You can see that in the, if you look at the bottom line with dollar difference, you'll see at our beginning, the starting salary, we were $192 below median. That range for starting salary between the 17 districts was so small and narrow that we were really right where we needed to be. If you go along the bottom row, you'll see as we go from five to 20 years of sal, of experience, we do very well. We get, we actually survey much better at our 20-year salaries. So we're compensating our experienced teachers above the market median based on this data that we're looking at. So one of the things that we did this year was look at our, the area districts and see what was happening with their starting, starting teacher pay for the coming year. And what we found was that they're, they were giving increases anywhere from 2% to 5%. Some of the districts were providing additional lump sum payments during the year, but that median starting salary, based on the data that we've gathered so far, we knew is going to be at least $58,000. So that was one of our kind of goals to look at, was how we can stay right at the median or close to the median without losing any, any of the ground that we've kept so far over the years. So if you look at fiscal year 2022 on this list, with most of the data that we came in at, if we were to not increase our salaries at all, you can see that we would fall significantly below the market median by about $1,692. So in looking at our, our recommendation, this is the teacher salary schedule that we are looking at. This on the screen actually shows you up to 35 years of experience. Our salary schedule for teachers actually goes to 53. We have two teachers that are, have hit 53 years of experience this year, so. The, the recommendation that we're presenting here is a 3% salary increase for all of our employees. As you see on the teacher salary schedule, several years ago, we implemented a new type of salary schedule with steps at the five, 10, 15, 20, 25, and 30 years, and 35 years of experience areas. And so those particular employees that fall on that step, those steps would receive anywhere from 7.06 to 8.42% of an increase. And I would guesstimate that we probably have about maybe 20% of our employees that fall on one of, of our teachers that fall on one of those, in one of those areas. We're also asking you to approve the stipend rates tonight. We do have some recommendations for additional market adjustments for certain areas, certain classes of employees, and our total estimated cost is $9 million that we are proposing. And I believe that is, the full salary schedule is in your information, and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We'll open it up for questions.
So I, I had a question. It says here in the, in the slide that this is a 3% salary increase for all employees. Does, so this, this applies to teachers, staff, and administration?
Yes, the, it does not apply to substitutes, though, so it would be our part-time and full-time TRS eligible employees.
I, I'll just make a comment that I, I appreciate the, the thought that's put into it, coming up with the, you know, salary increase. I also just wanted to recognize once again the, the job that teachers and staff did last year. You know, phenomenal, went above the, the call of duty in many aspects, lots of long nights, things of that nature. And I know last year, because of the uncertainty, we weren't able to offer what we typically do, so I, I'm, I'm appreciative of the fact that we're able to kind of get back on track and, and, you know, take care of our teachers and staff. I also like the fact that when you look at our compensation plan, we reward the longevity and the dedication and service to the district. So, you know, in some of those ranges, some of our teachers are seeing actually a seven or an 8%, you know, increase in their salaries compared to their peers in, in neighboring districts, so kind of, kind of appreciative of that.
I, I'd like to share some of my thoughts on this subject. Looked at it a little bit. And when I first came into this, the comment that we want to be in the middle of the pack compared to our peer districts resonated with me. And immediately, I was confronted with the fact that we pay at the top end, we are just about the highest paying district in our little area here, at the, at the top end with our more experienced people. And, and, and then on top of that, we were planning an across-the-board increase. So my first thought was, why are we doing that? Why are we taking an area where we're already not in the middle of the pack and going even higher with it? And I talked to the superintendent about that, and, you know, feel free to jump in wherever you want, but the concern he raised was salary compression. Now, I've worked at places where there was significant salary compression, so I do appreciate that that does cause problems, and that's something we would want to avoid. So I, I entered that into my calculus too, and one other thing he said resonated with me, and it's, the function here is not so much to retain our existing experienced teaching personnel as it is to attract quality from elsewhere. And so with that in mind, I think I finally got, personally, I got to a spot where I, I can, I can relate to this, I can get behind it. And the other thing that sort of resonated with me is the thought that if you have to spend M&amp;O money, this is the, the place, the one place where you want to spend M&amp;O money. And so with that, I'd like to just state that I do appreciate the work that's gone into this, and I do support the numbers that you have there.
And I, I would just add to that, that several years ago, before we implemented this type of salary schedule, we were actually further behind on the experienced teachers, and it's really helped us build that salary up for those, at that 20-plus year level by implementing this, this teacher salary schedule.
Mr. President, I, I think I found what I was confused about. So on, on page 337, it says that the salary plan for campus administrators will continue in 2021, 2022, and you review those to determine whether adjustments are needed. So is that, are campus administrator salaries either So is that, are campus administrator salaries either not changing, or if there are changes, those are kind of under a different scheme from the 3%? I mean, it...
So they'll receive the 3%, but several years ago, we implemented a process where we look at the market for those principals, assistant principals, associates. We compare those, just like we do to teachers, with TASB, with, through TASB, with districts in our area, and we've actually developed a plan, it's based on experience, so, for example, our elementary principals, there's a certain salary that we will pay for a principal with zero to three years of experience. When they hit four to seven years of experience, there's a salary. When they go from three to four years of experience, there may be an adjustment to get them up with the group that has the four to seven years of experience. So that's really what I was talking about, is they'll still get the 3%, there may be a few of them that are hitting those experience marks, that will get an additional adjustment to get them in line with the other folks in that same pay grade that have the same job and that same level of experience.
Okay, so yeah, that clarifies it for me, and so the 3% really is across the board?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I have two clarifications. One is the, another thing under the other salary adjustments, there is a change in speech-language pathologist salary, and I assume that's, is that based on some kind of schedule for years of experience too, or is that...
That one's a little different, so we looked at, at the request of Dr. Staley, we looked at speech-language pathologist salaries as compared to several area districts. They receive a stipend as well, and so we built that into it. We found for that particular group of employees that we were falling behind, and so we are recommending an adjustment to their salary in addition to the 3%. We actually are looking at doing that over two years, so it's not as big of a jump or a budget effect all in one year. So we'll look at that, this, we're recommending that this year, and then we'll look at it again next year to do, see where we landed, and then do another increase there if we need to.
Okay, so, relative to making sure that we don't lose ground in that area too, or lose employees, or have a, have a lot of people leaving, but are able to attract them?
Right, to be able to recruit and retain them, especially with being able to recruit more experienced speech-language pathologists as well. So we looked at beginning pay, we looked at the more average pay and where we land, so those were all factors that we looked at when determining if an adjustment was necessary there.
And that all, what is being done this year is a part of this that is being proposed, is included in that dollar amount?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and I think, I wanted to make an additional comment just off with Mr. Larson's comments, and I think I said something in the workshop about it too, but I think I was here back at the time that we were trying, that we were losing longer-term employees, and that we were way far behind in that, and I appreciate the work that has been done to bring that up to a level that we can retain, but also, I did note, and over these past few months, I've seen in the, the things that we've received in terms of new employees coming in, that we are doing a good job of not just getting all brand-new people right out of college, but we are getting some very experienced people in some areas where we really need them too. So again, I appreciate the work that's been done and to make that happen, and I think it is working well, and I hope to see that continue in the future.
And seeing no further comment, I'll ask for a motion. Mr. President? Mr. Sanchez?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation that the 2021-2022 District Compensation Plan be approved as presented.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cottrell?
No, go ahead. I couldn't see you.
Thank you, Mr. Cottrell, for that second, and seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand, and motion carries. Thank you, thank you. And before we conclude, I also wanted to recognize if Mr. Kohlenberg will stand up? Thank you very much for, you know, the help and the assist as well on budget and other district financial matters as well. We really appreciate that. And seeing no further business, I will adjourn this meeting at 9:50.